Okay, we will call the January 18th Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. First item on the agenda is countywide transit update, and I hear Tim is going to run with that one.
I'm gonna wing it. Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is from an issue back in November. You may recall that I briefed you back in, I don't know, I think it was in late November. And so ironically, I had time back then and prepared this presentation, so I'm glad I did, because Andy is out ill today. The issue with transit, as you may recall, is that the transit, we get transit provided through the city of Brainerd, a contract with the city of Brainerd, and then they provide the service for us. They decided, they went through a bid process, and they decided to go to a new provider, Blue Sky Transit. And you can see that there is some significant cost increases associated with that, $463,990 bucks, that's the difference between the two. How costs are typically shared in our county transit system, MINDOT and the Federal Transportation Administration, they cover 85% of our operating expenses and 80% of the capital costs. So this means that they will also cover 85% of that increased cost. So what's the uncovered portion of that increase? $69,598, that's what the local partners are gonna have to share in that cost increase. How do the local partners share? Typically, these are the percentages that we have lived with for quite some time about how the transit local shares are divided. So our portion of that would be 35% of that 60-some thousand, now we're down to 24,000. Keep whittling down, you know, how much is our responsibility? The historical philosophy here was to try to get as close to break even on our operating expenses as we can. You can see the historical performance here, you never hit zero, you just can never hit zero, but historically, these are what we have experienced, okay? Those cost increases, of course, will change this dynamic, and he did exclude 2020 and 2021 as data anomalies because of COVID, so, you know, obviously, they shut down for a while. So the issue for your consideration today is, how do you want us to make up that gap? You know the historical philosophy is, as close to break even as possible, which means we would need to do one of two things. We either gotta increase the ridership, which would increase your fare box revenues, that's a tricky business, or we can increase the fares. We would need to increase the fares by approximately a buck and a quarter a ride, the average fare today is $3.83. The other option is to reduce your expenses, eliminate low ridership routes. Crosby and the Pequot buses, those are usually full. The one to Breezy Point, eh, three days a week, it struggles with ridership, one, two people. And so, you know, it's either you increase your revenues to make up the difference, or you reduce your expenses to make up the difference. Do you want us to continue with the historical philosophy of break even, in which case, then I'm gonna direct Andy to either, it'll probably be a combination of increasing the fares some, but I would also suggest reducing and eliminating routes that don't have decent ridership as well.
Tim, if, if the Crosby and Pequot buses are usually full, why would we eliminate those?
Oh, I'm not proposing that we would. The Breezy Point one is, Crosby and Pequot are there for contrast. They're full, don't eliminate those. But where you have routes like Breezy Point, where there's only one, two, three riders a day, that's a fairly spendy route for the three days a week that we go there. So there are service implications, fare implications, bottom line, or, the other alternative here is levy for the difference.
So, Mr. Chair, if I can ask a question, because I'm not clear on, what's the definition of Crow Wing County in this scenario? Because we have Brainerd and Baxter pulled out separately, Pine River, of course, is pulled out separately, but Brainerd and Baxter are separate from Crosby or Pequot or any other part of the county. What, what is the definition here? I don't, what's our responsibility, I guess, is what I'm really asking?
Outside the boundaries of the city of Brainerd and Baxter.
Why, I don't understand that.
They are, I think they want higher levels of transit coverage than we would typically provide. It's sort of like a local city that wants more law enforcement protection than what the county would provide. And so there is a more intensive need for transit in those two jurisdictions, and so they contract with MINDOT directly to have a higher level of service.
Okay, and then, it mentions in here pass-through expenses, which are gasoline and maintenance, so those are on top of that 24,000?
No.
No, that's part of, that's part of, okay. That's my questions.
I guess I'm just, kind of piggybacking off of Steve's, if, if we've got service in the Crosby, I'm not sure if it goes to Emily and stuff, would it be worth the time to ask them to participate in the cost share on this, or?
We certainly could, we could reach out to the cities of Pequot Lakes.
I'm sure we know the answer, probably, but...
I would, I would expect the same.
It just seems like it's benefiting the communities of Crosby and Breezy, or Pequot, that maybe we throw that out and see what kind of response we get.
You know, it also says that Crosby and Pequot are self-sustaining, what's self-sustaining? I mean, how much should they bring in?
Fare box revenues. Do you equal or exceed the operating expenses for the route? So the Breezy Point one, for instance, is running at a deficit. Crosby and Pequot running at a surplus.
Tim, I have a question. Is Crosby still running at, at, you know, extreme ridership because they have a contract with St. Francis School to bring kids in?
I think the St. Francis School contract is part of the reason Crosby does as well as it does, and is also why Pequot Lakes does as well as it does. They do transport kids to school from those outlying communities to St. Francis.
Now, is that a separate contract, or is that part of?
It's a contract between the transit system, which is, you know, in this case, us, and St. Francis Schools. And Andy has historically administered that for us, so we don't have that direct contact, but it's in the county's system, so it's part of Crow Wing Counties.
So it's reflected in these numbers?
Now, does MINDOT have any input in the increased costs of this, or is just, they have to accept it?
One of, they, they, they're under contract, and that's the agreement in the contract, so they haven't bristled at that. The other thing you should be aware of is during 2020, and in 2021, and it looks like in 2022, the state will cover the full price of these differences. And so I don't think this is time-critical, I don't think it's gonna hit us immediately, but I do think at some point the state's gonna discontinue doing that, so we should be prepared.
What kind of numbers do we see, as far as users?
Oh, boy, I was hoping you weren't gonna ask a question. I don't know the answer. I can find out, but I don't know. Oh, here we go. Total ridership, this is between the years of 2016 and 2021. In 2019, they had 15,000 rides, 17,000 in 2018, 20,000 in 17, 23,000 in 16, 2021, looks like 11,000 and 9,000. You could see the COVID impact.
But it doesn't break them out from there as far as the?
It's just, that's the riders on the counties portion of the system.
Okay, so that, that includes all of the outlying cities and townships?
But not Brainerd and Baxter.
Or Pine River.
Pardon?
Or Pine River.
Or Pine River, and I didn't really cover them because they're not even in our county. But that is a contract just like Baxter and Brainerd has. Well, just like Baxter has with Brainerd.
So what are we looking for today, just, just an update, or?
My suggestion here is that we ask Andy to bring back a recommendation for a combination of an increase in fare revenues and potential elimination of low ridership routes for your consideration.
I think, Mr. Chair, if I might, one of the things we should consider, and Doug brought it up about participation by Pequot and Crosby, that could also be presented to Breezy Point if they would choose to, and if they don't want to participate, then I think Andy would be smart to say that that should go away.
And you might approach that as, Pequot and Crosby are self-sufficient, Breezy Point is not. Does the city wish to continue to have transit service three days a week or not? If they wish to cover the difference, we could continue to do so. If they don't wish to continue to cover the difference, then we wouldn't. Why would you not go to Brainerd and Crosby and ask the same question? Because they're self-sufficient, there's enough riders. So you could approach it that way, too, to say basically, if it's a deficit route, the local jurisdiction covers the difference, or we don't do the route. It's a little bit hard, but...
Do you know what the logic was for choosing the Blue Sky rather than productive alternatives with the amazing difference?
There, there were some historical issues, and I'm not going to be very well-positioned to highlight what those are, and so I could find out for you, Rosemary, but I, I wouldn't want to speak to it today.
Yeah, because, I mean, over $400,000 is a lot of money.
I think, is it, Paul, are you with us this morning?
I saw him.
Oh, yeah, I'm here. I'm just listening.
You're on the Transit Committee, is that right?
I am.
There really isn't one. There really isn't a Transit Committee.
Well, there isn't, there isn't really one anymore. This was another one that Rosemary and I were on, and kind of like that, that deal down Little Falls, that we decided that we didn't need to go to that anymore, and it was just, being that Brainerd has the contract, we had our own Transit Committee with appointees, and we really have no control over it, other than our fare box fee and what we charge, we can, we can have the decision on that, but as far as any other decisions, it's pretty much up to Brainerd, they're the ones that holds the contract. But the only thing that I'll support is, is if this is a zero levy deal, you know, I think either raise the fare to make sure that we're not gonna levy any, levy any dollars for this, because this is not, this is not required, we are not required to provide transit. And to me, if it starts to, to be a huge levy amount to provide transit, I say get rid of it. Otherwise, raise the fare box, you know, even a $5 ride, $5, I mean, come on, that's nothing. So that's, that's, that's where I'm at on this.
What, what's the current fare?
383.
383, that's the average fare, and it varies, I think they charge more for a longer ride.
Well, I think it would be, it would be nice to have some of these options put together as a, maybe a combination package, but in the meantime, maybe we reach out to some of these other locations to see if they're willing to participate, and then we go from there, I guess.
And if you don't mind, I would reach out to the cities that have a route that's at risk.
Yeah, right.
And say, we have a problem.
But, Tim, is that up to us, since we don't hold the contract? Wouldn't Andy have to do that?
Well, Andy, well, probably would be the right person to do that on our behalf, so I, basically, once I get this direction from you, I'm calling Andy tomorrow, and hopefully he's back in the office tomorrow, and give him the direction.
How, how long was that contract for?
Ours with the city?
Yeah, well, with the, the new carrier, the new company.
I believe that began in January. I couldn't swear to that, though.
How many years that?
I believe it was a three-year agreement.
So we're stuck with these numbers for a while.
Yeah, and realistically, we don't select that vendor. And if we wish to be the one to select the vendor, then we're gonna set up our own transit system and operate it ourselves. We'd have to have a contract with MINDOT, too.
From what I've heard, that probably won't happen.
For 24 grand, for 26 grand, it just doesn't seem like that makes good sense for us to go that route. That's what we're trying to make up here, is 26 grand.
Mr. Chair, it's interesting that MINDOT would accept going, you know, putting an RFP out, and we go with a, the high bid, and they don't even question that. It just seems illogical in my mind.
I know that there are close conversations between Andy and Sue Simers, who runs the MINDOT transit program, and so I trust that there are, whatever those issues were that led to cost increases, whether, I mean, you know, some are justified just by fuel prices going up, but whatever those issues were, has been vetted thoroughly with MINDOT. I have no indication that they are resisting those increased costs.
Right. Okay.
So I think we got a game plan.
Okay.
And we'll wait to see what, what they put together.
I'll reach out to the cities with a deficit and ask Andy to come back with a concrete proposal.
Do, what, what about townships that, do we, I'm assuming that maybe people from townships that utilize this as well?
I'm sure there are.
Do you want to stretch that far, or how?
It's on our established routes, we can. I think your likelihood of success there is even worse than it is with the cities.
I know we're getting down there, but I just, I, I'm just thinking that the more we, participation we get, the easier this would be to, to keep, keep it working, so...
And Andy's gonna have the best idea of how far, what's the gap for each of these routes that are marginal? And there's one that has the worst, and then there's the second worst, and then there's the third worst, and I would propose, Andy, work your list from the bottom up.
Right. Well, I think you'll get a pretty good sense in talking to the cities, which direction they'll go, and I would assume the townships, like you said, would be even less willing.
So we'll do that, we'll do that outreach, this probably won't come back for your consideration for another couple months.
Good.
All right.
Sounds good.
That's good there. All right, item two, land services.
Just gonna make sure Gary doesn't want to meet on this, I'll be right back.
Okay, yep. That's perfect.
I'm gonna start it in.
Was Gary gonna join us, or?
He'll be in in a minute, but we can get started.
Okay, all right.
All right, well, Mr. Chair and members of the board, I'll go ahead and get started. This next discussion is a continuation of the discussion we had at the December 21st Committee of the Whole Meeting on potential land use revisions, and we talked about a couple of different studies that we had in draft form as well, and those related to private platted roads and airports in Crow Wing County. I have with me this morning, I believe joining us on teams is Ben Olson with Hometown Planning, he's the consultant we've hired to do a lot of the research and a lot of the draft language, and working with us to, to make that happen. And then Tim Bray is here as well, he's actually out in the hall, I know he'll be coming in pretty soon here, and the Highway Department in general has been working with us, specifically with the platted road issue. So I just want to go over what we've done since we last had a discussion. We've updated and completed the draft language in the plating report, that was largely finished, we just tweaked a few words and tied a few bows on it from our last discussion. We've completed the draft of the airport study, that had a lot of spaces and gaps in it, not necessarily from a, we weren't sure what to do, but more of a, just some background work and some material we wanted to put in there to, to make it as robust as possible. So we've completed that study. We've met with the Highway Department to discuss further the information we received from our last committee meeting, and to just clarify it and go over, how does this, how's this gonna look once we craft some ordinance revisions to make sure we're on the, we're on the same page as we move forward. And then what we've also done is we've, we've made some small changes proposed to the land use ordinance as a result of the feedback. So in your packet that you've, you've seen, you've had a, it's, it's many pages, right? But we're getting to the point where we're actually getting draft ordinance revisions. So you've got the draft study of the airport study, you've got the platted road study, and then you actually have in your packet the strikeout language of what's actually being changed in the ordinance as a result of those studies and the feedback we've heard as we're preparing shortly here, if everything goes well, to go out for a 30-day public comment. My plan for today is just to go over the proposed revisions, one at a time, briefly. I certainly don't expect this to take as long as it did last time, it was, it was a good discussion. And then I'm also gonna go over at the end, there are some small revisions to the ordinance that I would not call substantive changes, but more word clarification and helpfulness to the ordinance. We've had some interpretation questions in regards to smaller issues that we needed to just improve the language on, so I'm gonna go over a couple of those. We did not go over those at the last meeting, just for time's sake, and it, again, it wasn't a real big change, so I'll go over a couple of those. I'll take any questions you have, of course, and go over our next steps timeline. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, with that, I think we'll start with, well, being that Tim is out in the hall, we'll, we'll start with the airport one first, and then dive into the platted road issue. The, on the airport side, the, what I'm basically going over is that table, thank you, Therese, for that, that's exactly what I'm planning to do. We are not planning to change the definition of private airport, no change there. Mr. Chair, is it, is it appropriate if I just roll through these very quick, and if anybody has any, hey, I want to talk about it, you can, you can jump in?
That'll work fine.
Okay. Allow for private airports, we're not making any change there. Allowing for private airports in the Shoreland District, that is the one change that we received feedback on, and our studies and research from other counties indicated that there was a trend there as well, so we are proposing to change the ordinance to not allow private airports in the Shoreland District. And then lastly...
So, oh, excuse me, Mr. Chair, if I, if I might, Jake, addressing that one doesn't prevent somebody from getting just outside the Shoreland District and having a airport or heliport or whatever?
Well, Commissioner, actually, our, our ordinance doesn't allow any private airports except for the airport district or ag forestry, it's very restrictive, so even rural residential would not be allowed to even ask for a conditional use permit.
Okay, thanks, I just wanted to be clear on that, those are the only places that'll be allowed.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then there was questions about whether we should adopt standards for private airports, being that they would either be in an airport district or ag forestry, which is very rural, typically and very wide open, we're not proposing to make any standards at this point. I think we'd feel differently if we were starting to allow these in different areas, but at this point, there would be no change. That's, that's it, other than, we did update the study, and I'm, I'm not gonna go through that too much, a lot of background work, I'll take any questions, otherwise, that's what we're planning to, to roll with.
Good.
Kim's comments?
Good.
All right. The next item we have is plats in the first assessment district, and I'll just roll through this similar, just like I did with the airports. First one is allowing for private roads, we are proposing to continue to do that, again, with provisions and a lot of restrictions, right? But we're not planning to only allow for public roads in the first assessment district, so no change to allow private roads. We are, have made a change to the definition of private road, we did include that in actual ordinance revision strikeout, that would have been in your packet to, to clarify that it's for any more than two lots is a private road, and a driveway would be something that's less than two lots. So when we have a developer or an applicant, we're gonna make it clear that if it's for more than two lots, we're gonna consider that a private road, and then you need to have appropriate standards for that road. So we have made that clarification. Require private roads to be built to public road standards, we said yes to this for residential developments, but no to non-residential developments, i.e. commercial developments. Maximum number of lots allowed with an administrative subdivision, and again, an administrative subdivision, different than the plating standards, that's, that's something we'd handle, handle over the counter through our own process rather than through a public hearing process. The change that we're proposing to make there is three lots in all areas of first assessment district, whether it's the Shoreland Zone or the non-Shoreland Zone in any five-year period, and I know there was a healthy amount of discussion there on that one. Minimum easement requirements for lots and administrative subdivisions, the proposal is to go from 33 feet to 66 feet in the FAD.
Jake, while you have a break, could I just go back to the private roads for public standards, where non-residential developments, so your commercial developments, why wouldn't we have that same standard for those?
Why would we not have the same standard?
That it be built to, to our standards, to the?
Yep. Well, Commissioner, in consultation with, just looking at the other counties and our Highway Department, I can have him speak to this a little bit more, there's some different standards, or some different development characteristics in commercial developments versus housing and permanent dwelling units, where you have sort of that permanent stay where the maintenance may be required and being requested. So we primarily base that off of the, the tendency for there to be a need of maintenance by a residential development versus a commercial development, and I don't know, Tim, I put you on the spot, if you had anything else to add to that?
Yes, I think, ooh, that's broke. Going back to the reason why we, or we took this up, and it was that the residential developments, those people had the potential of coming forward and having the county, or the first assessment district in this case, take over the maintenance, or there was unsure who's responsible for it. So in the commercial areas, it seemed like that was not likely to happen, and even if it did, that the first assessment district or public funds are expended to supplement a commercial business didn't seem like the right thing to do either. So I think that was part of the root of the discussion, and, and why we landed on residential only, because that seemed to be the root of the problem why we're here today.
So one of the, you have a question, Steve?
Well, I'm just thinking that if, if a commercial developer wanted to build a little strip mall, but it was back off of one of our main roads, so now you have a road going in there, they would, we would never entertain the fact that we would take over that road and say it was a mile away from our road. We would never, if they came and asked, we would say what to them?
I think if it was built to standard, you can make that, I guess, make that decision, but it's what we're requiring right now. So if somebody did have that strip mall and it did desire to have the public take it over and public funds do the maintenance and snowplowing on it, that they could build it to standard and then come to the county board at the time and say, will you take this over? What the ordinance is, is it's not required to do that, what, what we've been talking was, is setting the requirements, does that make sense? I'm sorry, I see a couple...
Well, I, I, I'm just concerned that we aren't on that same issue that we currently have with, with residential developments, and just trying to be a little proactive, I guess, in my thinking, I don't know if it's appropriate, but it just seems like, why would we, it doesn't make sense to differentiate between the two, because the ask could come. That's what I'm hearing you say, it just hasn't happened a lot in the, in the history of developments, but there's nothing that says it couldn't. And then we would be challenged with having to take over a road that doesn't meet our standards and have to develop it ourselves. And I like developer-driven construction myself, and then everybody pays the freight, and if it's at our standards, we don't ever have to worry about if we have to take it over, or we're asked to take it over, in, in answering that question, we would just do it. It's just my thought, and I, I don't know what the other commissioners think, but...
I agree with you, I don't want to end up with a 33-foot road someplace and know, you know, that's what we're fighting now, so I'd just rather take care of it before it happens.
Mr. Mr. Chair, or, and Commissioner, if I could, the standard for 66 feet in all plats still applies throughout the county. And the, the other thing to consider is that on a case-by-case basis for commercial plats, if there is a clear and present, whoa, we might want to, for this one, do that, you, you could still do that as a county board. I, I think just to clarify, the difference would be unilaterally for residential, you need to do that. Versus commercial, what we're suggesting is, if there's a need that comes up where there's some hesitation by the county board, you could certainly condition that or go back, remand it to, to revise that on a case-by-case. Certainly respect your maybe opinion or question about, should we do that for all commercial as well? So I just wanted to throw that out there, so...
I don't know. I'm not in planning and zoning all the time, but it just seems easy to me that it would be easier just to have it, you know, not have to come and condition it, just have it there.
Well, that's something we could, we could certainly discuss. I know we had the, I think Eric Weston had that Rock Ridge one. I think, Tim, wasn't that a good example of, would that be the right move for that one, or?
Well, that was the example, I think, that I spoke about in one of the last ones, is that putting a 66-foot requirement on that would be really restrictive for, for that type of development, to think about these storage units. You have to put a cul-de-sac in there and those kind of things, and it can be, it can be very restrictive. And one of the other things we were concerned about is if it's built to that public standard, I think there may be some expectation that the county or the First Assessment District take it over and then plow it. So now you're in a commercial development, providing their snowplowing to, for their business endeavor. And I don't know if that's right or wrong, but I think it becomes challenging for us to do that. To take that on with public funds to support that commercial business, to plow their essential driveway for their patrons.
I think they're just like any other business. We don't plow them all out, you know?
No, but again, I think if you're, if you're setting the, the standard that it must be paved, it must be 66 feet wide, it must be 24 feet, it must have the right amount of gravel and batuminous, and that large expenditure that those developers are going to invest in that type of development, I think the expectation is then that the public take it over. And then you could get in a situation where you are plowing out commercial businesses. That's it. And there might not be a resident that lives there, it might be just storage buildings around a, a circle.
Mr. Chair, but if I can ask a question for clarification, Tim. So I'm talking about the approach road. Similar to, like, my property, you know, the end of my driveway, I'm responsible for everything from that, end of that driveway to my home. The road is the requirement that the city keeps that clear. So if we have a road that approaches a piece of property, so using your example up there on three, if there's a little stretch that's considered a, an approach road, I don't know how else to say it, you know, the development just south of there where the road goes in and you've got the home development back there, we potentially could take that one over at some point if it gets built out to our standards. So there's always a, an approach, is what I'm looking at. And then there becomes the landowner's responsibility at that point. So I'm not saying that you would build that road inside their confines to our standard, but leading to it would be our, build it to that standard. That's, am I thinking wrong on this?
I was thinking internal. I was thinking, I was thinking the internal ones and requiring that you have up to our standards. And I think that could become problematic. Certainly approach roads like that particular one, up there, south of the woods there, we'd want to have it up to standard. There's a lot of different scenarios we can through, look through and situations. When I was, I was talking about the internal workings of a commercial piece of property, requiring that to be 66 feet, pavement thicknesses, cul-de-sac widths and that kind, that kind of stuff, and the internal could be very, could be viewed as very restrictive for some of the commercial operations. And it could fall in the lap of the, the First Assessment District maintaining essentially their driveway inside...
Tim, do we take, have we ever taken over any commercial property?
Um, I can't recall any right now.
I don't think we have, and I don't think that's what we were talking about. We just want to make sure there's not a cow path going into that.
Oh, okay. So I was, I was misunderstanding, because I thought the, when, when we were going through this, it was the, the internal, because like, like a residential plat, that is an internal road that's serving all these lots, and we would want to make sure that that is up to standard. So leading up to them...
Maybe this is just exactly what we want it to, but we're not understanding it.
That might be.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, it's just a number of options. And I don't know that we're going to be able to write something that will hit on every one of them, that some will be case-by-case, but...
Mr. Chair, I think it puts the, the onus back on, on staff to make sure when they're meeting with these people that want to develop, that you're making sure that everything's, you know, to standard.
Could a clarification be no to the internal commercial development roadways? As a clarification?
Say that again?
So I think the second line there, yes for residential developments, no for non, let's see, no for commercial or internal networks of commercial developments or something like that. I'm not finding the words right now, but... There's a lot of scenarios...
Yeah. I didn't think it was a big deal, and now it is.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion? Let me frame it a little bit differently for you. First off, have we ever had a problem?
No.
No. We haven't had a problem with commercial. And so we're, we're seeking a solution to something we haven't had a problem with yet. I would wait for the problem, if I were you. Here's the issue with residential developments. We put in a private road, and 12 residences are left to fend for themselves. In what you described, one person is left to fend for him or herself. It's a much different situation where you're trying to get groups of people having to come together to maintain a piece of public infrastructure, and it never works. And then there are free riders. Some people pay, some people don't. It's not equitable, it's not fair. Your situation that you described, one person, if they don't have a decent enough road coming into their business, people aren't going to go in. If I got to wreck my car to come into your business, I'm not coming. I think it's a little bit, that, that the, the problems that come from private roads are just different for residential versus non. If you really want to tie it up, you could say, yes, for non-residential developments where there's an expectation of a public road. Do you want to plow that road? Because if you build that road to township standards, and then they ask you to take it over, you're going to start to plow that.
Let's just leave it alone right now.
Yep.
I, I think that's okay, too. We don't really have a huge problem here, so I'd wait until we do.
Sorry to take up your time.
No, I, the questions are good. Questions are good. And, and Mr. Chair, to, to Mr. Hul's point, we actually do have something already in, in the books in the ordinance, that if, if you intend to do a public road, you must meet all these standards. So we've got some things in there that we can, we can work with.
Okay.
So, okay, let's see. I think I was at road construction standards in subdivisions, and this would be for plats that our proposed requirement would, would, I know on the outline, it, it has like four or five bullets, but really what we're planning to do there is, is to adhere to the Highway Department's policy for all construction standards. And that, that list right there isn't comprehensive of all of them, it's comprehensive of a few of the major ones that people like to talk about probably, so we'll probably firm that up. But that's something that I know the Highway Department's probably going to be working on, is revising that in anticipation of this, so that when we hand that out at meetings, those policies and we refer to it in our ordinance, that it's up to date and exactly what the Highway Department wants. I don't have anything else to add on that, Tim, unless you do? But...
All right, I'm going to try to keep it inside the lines this time. Those do represent some of the, I would say, minimums, but just like when we build any roads, the soil conditions change and the site conditions change, and we want to make sure that these roads stand up to the soil conditions. So these might change, like more thickness if it's a not very good soil. And so how we've approached this is introduced or firmed up the requirement that the developers must have a licensed engineer in Minnesota, which will take into account the soil types and the site conditions to design a road that will last the test of time. And so all those, these are bullet points, they could change more than likely thicker. So these are considered the minimums. But we're going to have a licensed engineer sign off. Otherwise, we would be designing all the roads for the developers, and that's something that we're not capable of taking on.
Okay.
And I think, Mr. Chair, what's, what's nice is we've, we've crafted language about the fact that it needs to, well, actually, that's getting to our next point. I dove ahead a bit. Requirements for a road, private road maintenance plan. So we don't currently have that, but we've added language now to require a road maintenance plan, which would be recorded, and we've included that it needs to not only include, you know, just snowplowing, but the types of work that is to be done and, and who financially is to be handling that. So I know that was some feedback about, well, it's not just the plowing, it's about the long-term care of the road right of way. So we made sure to make that a little bit more broad to address those issues.
And wasn't that kind of the initial conversation that we...
That's where we started.
That, that first item, which is, okay.
And then we have the requirement of a developer's agreement containing the type and the amount of financial assurity. We've, we do require those for plats, but now we're saying in the FAD that we're going to require those upfront at the preliminary plat, because I think that'll play a role in the board's decision to approve or deny that plat, because there's timelines in those developer's agreements, and there's, there's some meat in there about exactly what the improvements are and, and the cost estimates and things like that. So we're going to be requiring that upfront more. And then lastly, there was some discussion about whether we would talk about other improvements in plats. We're, we're keeping that in the study, but we're going to strike that from ordinance revisions. So we're going to keep it narrowly focused. I'll probably actually strike this from this table, but we did keep it in the study as something to consider for the future, because we thought it was relevant for other improvements and how we're going to manage that. So that's the private roads in the FAD issue. And lastly, do have some other language clarifications, just to make it easier for staff and the public to understand the ordinance, which is always a good thing. So I listed a few article provisions, and I kept it very broad, but just some examples, we did run into an issue of cargo containers. Everyone seen cargo containers? They look like semi-trailers that get offloaded and then people use them for storage. Those are allowed. They are allowed with a permit. They were amended in 2014. It was slightly controversial from my reading at the time. It was a split decision by the board, but they are allowed. Our ordinance reads vaguely, though, that they're allowed. It's just not, not as clear, but definitely that was the intent. So we made it very clear, cargo containers are allowed with a permit. So that proposed change come about from our staff and the public not reading it very well, it just doesn't read very well. So there's one. There was redundancy in one of our boardwalk tables, probably more of a clerical error than anything, so we hacked off one of the columns in the table just to make it read easier, no substantive change there. And then we allow guest cottages in our lots in the Shoreland District and rural residential. So everyone gets a house, and then they can have a guest cottage up to 700 square feet. Part of the DNR allowing us to do that on lots that don't meet minimum lot size requirements in exchange was to mandate that we had to have a shoreline buffer on all of these lots, like a normal buffer near the shoreline. Our ordinance vaguely states it. It, it needs to be strengthened to make it clear, again, for staff and for the public to really make it, drive home that message that we need to do that. And so just added some more robust language. Again, that's why I packaged them up a, a little bit more broadly there, it's just not really a lot of changes, just clarification. I'll take any questions anybody has on those more broad changes, but you would have seen them in your packet as well.
Question for you on the ordinary high water and the...
Oh, yep, missed that one.
RFE and that.
Yep.
Since the DNR sets those, does it need our approval to administer or put it on Ross Lake?
Well, Mr. Chair, or Commissioner Burrows, I think on that one, that's just a change we need to do, and we're putting it in there just so everyone can read it and see it. So to deny that ordinance revision would be unusual, but I, it's almost a formality. But it is a revision to the land use ordinance that, that we need to do from time to time.
And I, and I would agree. I think it, it does need to be in there, and I think we do have to bless it, because it does impact the building...
Oh, absolutely.
...footprint and that. So DNR doesn't review those kinds of things...
Yeah.
Like you do.
Agreed.
Very good.
I can go over, if there's no other questions, our timelines moving forward, because at this point, it picks up steam a lot and gets more out in the open. What we're going to do now is we have a Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting on Thursday. We're going to take what we have here, and we're going to, on items, matters not on the agenda, other business, we're going to present it to the Planning Commission just as an FYI. So that's not a, it's not a public hearing, it's not a public comment, it is just a, they haven't seen any of this yet. It's just a, hey, just so you know, we've been working on this, here's what's coming your way, we're going to go out for public comment FYI. So that'll be happening this Thursday evening. On February 1st, it's my goal to get this out for a 30-day public comment period start. We also have, after today, I'll be having the DNR review our ordinance before it goes out for public comment, in case they had anything that I wasn't anticipating, and we can take care of that right away. I don't anticipate any issues, but they do oversee the Shoreland ordinance. So things like the airport, like that, they're going to want to take a look at that. We'll do a 30-day public comment, then we'll have a public hearing on March 17th in front of the Planning Commission. They'll also make a recommendation, as they're required to do at that time. We will send out an invite to the, I would say, the county board as well, in case you wanted to listen in to that public hearing and see, you know, any public comment at the, at the hearing itself. We also will take the written comments and gather that and include that in the packet as well. Then we're going to take on April 12th, and we're going to present our final ordinance revisions to the county board for you to make a decision. And then one month after that, that would be May 12th, the ordinance becomes effective. So 30 days is, is a while, but that's what it says in our ordinance, is 30 days after a decision has been made. So there's, there's kind of the road ahead. It's hard to believe in January, you know, we've still got a foot of snow. It's going to take until May 12th just to, to get it done, but that, that's where we're at.
Good to go.
All right. All right.
Tim, why would we have that 30 days? It seems like we just, we just drone on and on and on. Is it just, I mean, you know, I, this, this whole thing of public comment, I guess it's all good. But the thing is, is that's why they elect us to come here and make decisions on their behalf. And if we, you know, it seems like if we're always constantly reaching out and public comment and, you know, we're not really leaders then. We're, we're just, we're just sitting there and we're getting to see which way the wind is drifting and then we're making a decision. So I, I don't know. Why, why, why 30 days? Have you got any comments on that or?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Corrigan, we adopted this policy of a 30-day public comment period probably about 10 years ago, I think, about 10 years ago. And then we, our requirement under the ordinance is to hold a public hearing. So we are required to take public input on any ordinance changes that we make. So the question was, who are we going to take comment from? And if the only thing we did was a 9:00 AM public hearing in the Crow Wing County Board meeting on a Tuesday morning, that's going to mean certain people can attend and comment. And we wanted to level the playing field. And it is really trying to make sure that every John Q citizen has just as easy of a time participating in these kinds of things as someone who happens to have Tuesday mornings free.
So, so Tim, is it, is it, is it a state statute requirement that we hold a public hearing or is that our policy?
The public hearing is a requirement in statute.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're good to go?
Thank you, Jake.
Looks like Ryan's up next. We're going to only give you two hours, all right?
That should do it.
Okay.
Good morning. So we have the Crow Wing County recreational use plan. We've made several updates to the plan and just have it here for a discussion. Some quick overview and background, we originally had a 2012 comprehensive recreation trails plan, and that only dealt with recreation trails for the most part. Didn't have any information about parks or infrastructure at parks, very little information on our accesses. And so we've updated that plan to include parks, accesses, all the maintenance we do at our parks, all the infrastructure and the replacement plans for that infrastructure, like signs and shelters and that sort of thing. And then we've attached various ordinances as our appendixes to this plan to kind of make it more of an all encompassing recreational use plan rather than just a trails-focused plan. We also reached out to all the user groups and we included potential trail developments that all the user groups would like to see over the next 10 years or so, and included those in this plan. So essentially, we just have it here for discussion today if there's anything we missed, anything you'd, you'd like to see added additionally. We did discuss it with the Natural Resource Advisory Committee in early January, and it was favorable discussion all around with very few changes. There was one, one minor suggestion from a, a club to add an additional trail segment, which we did since then. And so, but other than that, just here to discuss.
My question is, and you and I have discussed this previously, is the relationship with the county highway department about developing a strategic plan and a, to build out roads, county roads with wider shoulders when that road comes up for reconstruction. And I don't see any of that in, in here. And that concerns me because that addresses ATVs, but it addresses bicyclists that'll be on the roads, it could be wheelchairs, it could be walkers, runners, whatever. And I don't see that in our plan. And because I believe that recreation is extremely important to our county and that we need to make sure we have every recreational opportunity available as competition gets stiffer and stiffer for those dollars, I believe that that's a part that's missing from this plan and working with the highway department to figure out where the, what roads that would entail. And I, it's not going to be every county road, but I do believe that there should be a plan out there that addresses that. So when we look at those lost dollars and rebuilding roads, that we can build that into the plan. Otherwise, it won't get done. And to do that, you have to look out 10, 15, 20 years because that's what they deal with over there at the highway department. So I wish that had been in there, but I don't see it in there, Ryan.
I could add to that. I know we have a meeting, I think, Thursday with Representative LeWick. Aiken County adopted something similar to that. It might be worthy of asking him how, how effective that's been or just how that's working, but as a kind of a side note, but we, we've discussed it, but it was some time back and I, I don't recall just where it's at in their ordinance or plans or what, but...
Sure. Okay.
A good source of information for something like that.
Yep.
Tim, did you want to add anything to that or?
I think maybe what we're talking about, so this, I did have a conversation with Gary was a month ago or so, and I don't, I guess I don't recall the conversation. So he did bring it to my attention about the shoulders of roadways, and it just maybe just washed over me. But I think the planning for this is really, it is really important. And as we look at how to utilize our local option sales tax to expand roadways and things like that. I don't know if this is the only place or the exclusive place where this lands, because there's a lot of consider, other considerations. And maybe that the more appropriate place is a transportation plan because we're going to look at the volume of the roadways, not only where their logical pedestrians are to using the system, but also does it fit with the volumes of traffic that are there? I think it's bigger than what Ryan is doing here. And, and we've discussed it out in the hall and I, you know, we spoke a little bit before. And I think maybe taking a step back, seeing if it becomes part of our work at the highway department to make sure that we're accommodating users of all abilities and of all modes of travel rather than in this recreation plan. There, there's overlap certainly, but I think there's a lot more consideration in my shot for some of those factors that may drive those decisions. So my suggestion is maybe task us to take a look at that. I know that I've already had some discussions with Tim Hoole about my tasks for this year to take a look at the utilization of the loss, which included the expansion of shoulders where are appropriate and those kind of things. So that's my suggestion is maybe it's something that the highway department takes a look at considering all of our factors and then certainly the connections to the recreational systems that exist or you're planning.
Mr. Chair, and I'd be very comfortable with that. And I probably think that's a better approach than going through the recreational ordinance first. But there is overlap and it eventually will be part of that use plan. So I appreciate your offering up your team services out there. And, and I realize this will take some time to discuss and that, but I, I think it's important to look at it and plan strategically for it. So thank you very much. And with that, I don't have any other concerns.
How would we like to, would, would it be all right if Ryan just touched on the new parts of the, or is everybody comfortable with what, what we have in front of us?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
We could, if you want, add a simple sentence to the recreational trails plan saying that the highway department is encouraged to evaluate paved shoulders at the time of the full reconstruction of any county road. And the, I think the proper place to put that planning is in the transportation plan. That's where it's going to get funded from. It's got to get engineered there. And so I do think it's appropriate to put it there. But if you just put a, a reference to that here, it acknowledges that these two have an interplay. So I would make that suggestion. The other thing I wanted to point out is one of the things we're trying to do in bringing these plans forward for you is to do more transparency between you and staff about what we're going to do, what we're going to do moving forward. So I do want you to pay close attention to the appendices here because it's showing you the capital plan for each of the county parks and what we're going to go do. That's our plan anyway. And so as you're looking at those things, if you see something that, what the hell, we need to know that. And so I want you to understand that is a primary purpose here is to help you understand where staff thinks we ought to go. And we're asking for your informator. Are we on the right track or is there something there that you find so objectionable that, oh God, I don't want to do that?
I just wanted to jump in too and say, if you think of this plan, this is what we go out and do on the 105,000 acres that, you know, we have out there open to the public. This is what, you know, really sets forth where the parks are going to be, where are those trails? And so we did struggle with, you know, we have that ATV ordinance that's an appendix. But if you look at those, those are individual ordinance of themselves. They were voted on and they're kind of like a county law. And to make a change to those, that goes back to statutory requirements, public hearings and things to change those. We appendicized a lot of those because we do want to have them all in one place. And I want to pick on like the parks ordinance. This thing, this was a big elephant and we're, this is like the first of a couple other bites that I, I want to kind of use this analogy of. When we look at like the park ordinance, we know we need to bring that back to you for consideration for some updating. But just to bring it to your attention that we have one is, I know, kind of very funny, but I do believe that's been shelved for a long time. But there's so many pieces here in this plan that got updated this time. It kind of, it's just mam, it was just a huge, huge change. And so somewhere we needed to go enough was enough for the first main update. Get that transparency to say, here is what we're planning on all of the infrastructure through the, on the 105,000 acres. And then keep working, you know, some of those appended, appendixes if that kind of makes sense. ATVs definitely need to be followed up on. And I apologize, we, we just didn't come to a real good path forward, Commissioner Barrows. And, but the park ordinance, and then there is, I, it just alluded me, but there's one other one that we want to actually start to bring a series, you know, like every so often, we're going to continue to bring, not the whole thing back, but there's some appendixes to continue to work on, making sure you guys really do have a good understanding what we're doing and that we're really transparent on, well, this is what we thought we were doing. Here's maybe some changes or some options, and then you guys keep us on the right track. Just wanted to kind of point that out.
Mr. Chair, if I can. Ryan, do we promote the use of these parks in the winter?
Not so much in the winter. We do leave the gates open, so they are open to the public with the exception of the fire tower itself isn't open for climbing, but...
Well, I just noticed in the fire tower is that, you know, we don't plow the driveway out.
Right.
Or plow the parking. And yet people are going in and out of there. And that could create more of a problem for people getting stuck or whatever than, because it's getting a lot of use and it's getting, you know, there's a lot of support there. So if we're going to promote and allow people for, you know, to use those for the hiking, the snow shoeing, other, you know, cross-country skiing, whatever they may look at doing. But when I just see the amount of traffic that seems to be going into there?
Sure.
I'm thinking that plowing would make some sense.
Sure. We, we do say that they are open year round, sunrise to sunset. So that's something we'll have to think about. Yeah.
Look at that.
Yeah.
I, I for one, I for one don't, don't support, I don't, I don't want this one plowed down here at South Long. I, there's just no, there's no purpose for it. There's no purpose to run staff all the way out there, I don't think. Or the Milford Mine, I mean, nobody can really walk around there, so it doesn't make any sense to me. So I for one would be voting no to that snow plowing idea.
Why don't you see if you can find out what the winter utilization is somehow? And so we can look at this from a data-driven perspective of how much traffic is there?
I think one thing that I've become aware of the last probably a couple of years is the amount of snowshoes in our county is a lot more than I think what people maybe sometimes think. And I think the fire tower, definitely, we've heard from folks calling on that. And believe it or not, they do a lot of snow shoeing at Milford too that, you know, maybe Commissioner Corrigan too is unaware of. But yes, we'll figure out how maybe we can get some data for the winter months here. Let's go start on that right away.
I could say that the DNR is, this is the first year that they've started plowing out in, in the rec area to some of the access points. So, and again, it's based off usage. So it may be that you can set a kind of a user number or determine, but in, in this plan, and it, it doesn't belong in here, but do we know what it costs like for each park as far as the maintenance and upkeep? Do we track that or is it just all? And I'm thinking of, of just preparing us for potential costs so we don't, like the sheriff's office, get a million dollar bill for radios. Are we looking ahead for that kind of a five-year plan, if you will?
Yeah. We put, if trees wanted to go to it, there's a 10-year capital, it's an improvement plan, but that's going to take care of all of our significant infrastructure needs that, and that goes anything from the actual buildings to the four-wheeler snowmobiles that we've had, you know, we had a discussion about side by side here a couple of years ago. Planning for when those need to be replaced, we, we have that, yeah, here it is. And it's a fairly lengthy list, a lot of, lot of assets that we have in, under this umbrella. And I think we do a good job with when's the right timing. We worked with Joe out at Highway to kind of help us understand, you know, length of service for different vehicles?
Page 68.
And facilities for how long something's going to last.
Page 133. The page is labeled number 68. It's in your packet, page 133. And this is what I was talking about that I really want you guys to pay attention to. This is a plan that runs from 2022 up to 2031. And I'll zoom in a little bit so you can see. This is what you're seeing is for each of the different parks that we have, there's the projects. That's what we're planning to do. And you can see when we're planning to do it, and you can see what we think it will cost to do it. We don't have it broken out cost by park, I don't believe.
We, we don't. We don't charge, I mean, we could definitely set up a process because like for staff costs to go to, let's just say, the Fire Tower Park, we definitely could figure that out with some kind of accounts. But currently, you can kind of think of the maintenance and upkeep of the parks. You can think of one FTE kind of typically for, for a year. So if you, you know, that's probably going to run with fully loaded, probably around pushing 70,000 to keep our parks, I want to say, in a very good position, everything repaired, vandalism taken care of if that happens, Beaver Dam once in a while, that kind of stuff, roughly.
Could have made this a little larger so that you could read it.
How about if we get those small ones? Why don't you put them on 11 by 17 and send them back out? Because it would be very hard to read it. And the point is, we want them to read it.
And this is the plan. What I'm hoping to have better clarity on too is this is all driven, all of this, we haven't used any levy dollars in this. And so if we have a good year, and I think, you know, as long as this economy keeps rolling, real estate's still strong, we could, could hopefully continue to have another couple really good years of sales and activity, that this is the plan. And if we can be opportunistic and either speed some of these up or add some things to it to enhance the overall experience, those are those things that we potentially would come back and go, do you guys want to consider this at this time? Oh, you know what? We might have some money to create another new trail that we weren't planning on in a specific year if we have, you know, the funds. But this, this is taken into consideration, this is basically keeping the lights on for the next, you know, 10, 12 years without any additional revenue.
Word of caution. You talk about, you know, our land sales will probably go down, the good land that we have to sell. So we want to be careful and we want to be strategic about where we're going to go when those dollars go away because then it will come back on the levy.
And I think that's kind of what we're trying to do.
Right.
When you have a windfall, use the list.
Yep.
When you have a deficit, use the list. You're not going to do something.
Right.
But at least the list is here so that if we do have excess proceeds, we're being more strategic about what it is we're going to use those opportunistic proceeds for. And we're not going to scramble as much and you're going to know what we're going to come and ask you for if there are excess proceeds. So that is what we're trying to accomplish here is that movement from being completely opportunistic, if you will, when we have such surpluses, to being more strategic about here's what we're going to ask you for if we have surplus resources. And then we'll update the plan.
And I don't know what pages they are. I had them on my computer, but there's some great enhancements in here like sign inventory. You know, a couple of years ago, I was listening to Tim Bray, they were buying a new sign truck and it was like, I can't remember, 30, 40,000 signs they got, you know, throughout the county and how many do we have? And we wanted to standardize them and it was amazing how many signs are actually out there. We have a full inventory, you know? We know what the costs are if we need to replace them. We standardized the messaging. Couple of those things need to be tweaked in the park ordinance. It does, currently aren't totally, I want to say codified because they, they just, that park ordinance needs some work. But really good, really good transparency way of going where, why do you put signs here? Where are they at? What do they look like? As an example of trying to get your, you know, we've been doing all this work, trust us, we're doing great. Now we can really show you in a document what's, what should be out there on the ground.
I can't see it in here, but is that Cruiser Kettle, is that included in here?
Yes.
Yep.
It is under the, Ryan, you probably have it quicker than I do. But those two, you have Cruisers Kettle and then the connector, Kiuna Connector Trails are both in there as county-sponsored on county tax forfeited property.
It's, it's not in this table here?
It's under, oh no, not on that table, under non-motorized summer trails, page 21, 22 maybe?
So most of, if you're looking at like where are the trails and like improvement on those, as far as those bike trails, ATV trails, snowmobile stuff, all of that maintenance and stuff is performed and done by the clubs themselves. We just enhanced the forest road that went back in there and we're, we're going to be looking at, that one was kind of unique, but we have in our forestry plan, forest road maintenance and where it goes in, in the forestry plan, not so much in the rec plan.
So does, does that have maintenance?
Yeah.
Or is?
Yep, we budget for forest road maintenance every year. Yep.
Because we know that two, three years from now, we'll probably have to go back and do some road work.
Correct. Yep.
What's Cruiser's Kettle? I never, I don't think I've ever heard of it. Is that how you pronounce it?
It's a mountain bike trail in, near the Kiuna Country Rec Area. It's on some county tax forfeited land and so it is our mountain bike trail, correct?
Yeah, it's one of two mountain bike trails that are, a lot of people don't realize are actually on county property and county sponsored. The mountain bike crew still does, it's, it's very similar to an ATV trail.
Oh, I, I remember, isn't it right before you get to the landfill on the left-hand side?
No, that's actually our one and only off-road motor, motorcycle trail up there by the landfill.
This is out by Kiuna, Paul. If you remember a few months back where a gentleman was hurt pretty serious by a fall.
Yeah, yeah.
And there was a request to go out and do some improvements to, to gain better access to these accidents and, and Ryan and Gary put together a plan and I believe in two weeks' time, you know, a lot of that work was done, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's.
I guess I didn't know that we had, Crow Wing County had mountain biking trails, I guess I didn't.
It's fairly new, but I, I would say what, three years, four years?
Yeah.
That was.
Yeah, grand open, I think three years ago, a grand opening. Cruiser's Kettle, just for a little bit, is a black diamond trail or double black diamond. So very, very difficult level, experienced bikers should use that trail. Like Kiuna Connection would be somebody like me, I don't do it very often, so I probably could survive the connection trail, but I probably wouldn't or shouldn't go ride the Cruiser's Kettle Trail.
Yeah, Paul, if you're ever looking for me in the summer, that's where you can find me is that Cruiser Kettle.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Different kind of kettle. We're going to get you blown up versions of the capital plans so that you can see not only the maintenance, but also the enhancements. And I would ask that you look closely through it because those are the things we're going to ask you for. And if you have an objection, we'd rather know now. As a result of this, this would come forward for board approval for the plan. It is planning our work and there is subsequent stuff. Gary talked about ordinance updates that this may drive and we will initiate the processes to make those updates in an orderly fashion. This is the plan, your work, and if you give us your blessing, then we're going to go work our plan.
Okay, Doug, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Okay, so this is to kind of go off of what Steve Barrow said. Okay, so I, I guess, you know, yes, I, I see how many, how many people are using this South Long Lake Park and I'm going back to what I said, I never was a big fan of Crow Wing County being in the park business, but I see that people are using it. So I guess what, what I'm wondering is, okay, so let's say eventually the land sales aren't as plentiful as, as they were and is there going to be enough money from our timber sales generated to pay for the maintenance and the upkeep of, of our park facilities so that we don't have to look at levying dollars into the future, people's property tax dollars? Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, if I can answer that. If, when we, we'll send out the bigger, larger plans so everyone can read it a little bit better. Typically on an average year, think of about 850, $900,000 it takes to run the operation. That's all the expenses. Our timber sale usually generates right around a million dollars, just roughly give or take. So if, if that continues to stay steady, which it has for, for, for a while, we should be able to continue on with just our timber sale. Right now, we've been very opportunistic. We've made some great improvements. I mean, there wouldn't be a fraction of what's at the fire tower if it hadn't been for, you know, how great we've done with the land sale last couple of years. But typically as far as just maintaining what we have, we should be in really good shape unless something, you know, would really happen with the timber sales, then we would need to come back and you guys would have decisions to make, you know? Do you want to lessen maintenance, close a park? I mean, you guys would have a gamut of different options or it could be, you know, slide some of this to potentially levy, but right now I don't foresee that that's going to be an issue anytime soon. I, I hope you can hold me to it, but I hope, I hope everything stays the way it is. We should be fine for many, many years. Commissioner Corrigan?
I think your big ticket items are, are done and behind us in fairly reasonable dollars we're looking at here now going forward and unless we were to add another park, but I don't see any huge numbers.
Yeah.
But again, I don't see the numbers, so I'm not sure.
So I guess that we either do the larger piece of paper or we'll get you guys some magnifying glasses, you know? You have.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I had.
Okay. We're going to get you the bigger lists and we'll bring it forward for your consideration at a future county board meeting if that meets with your desires. Has this gone out for public comment?
Yeah, basi, no, not officially sent out.
Ordinance changed, so we don't really need to.
No, we, we went to all the user groups. We presented at INRAC and really, I thought, and we've made a ton of changes, I thought we'd make another round of a lot of changes, but it was very, very well received at INRAC. I mean, I mean, there's some folks that, you know, been asking about this for, for numerous years and the feedback was, wow, this is really good. The last time we did this, it cost us $80,000 to create one, you know? We're like, jeez, do we need a consultant? So I gotta, I want to just give a props to staff. They've done an awesome job with the historical record-high volumes that we had in 2021 to push through and get like these projects done too. It's just phenomenal work from staff this year. I mean, it is every year, but just amazing this year.
I, I know at INRAC, Ryan, there was a suggestion on our, our webpage to make it a little bit more user-friendly, if you will, that will draw you into some of these parks and trails and stuff. Has that been looked at yet or?
We, I, I know we're looking at engaging with the website committee on a potential visitors. Maybe we can have a visitors tab, but that's a whole process. Yeah, so we're looking, we're looking into that, yeah.
Yeah, Doug, we went right back, sent that over to IT. I think Brian Olson is the guy that kind of manages that. So they're also looking at updating the whole website again, I think, next year. So it's like, we were trying to get this tab, this visitors tab and stuff, so we're working with IT on that currently.
It just, again, the increasing numbers of, of users is.
Yep. That was a great idea. Yep.
And it, it really isn't creating a lot of extra work because all the work is in here. It's just drawing the people too, so. Anybody else?
I'd only like to say thank you for all the work that you guys have put in for Jake and Ryan and Gary and your staff for what you've put together for us. I mean, it looks like a ton of work that you've gone through, so much appreciated. Tim, thank you for your, putting another load on your staff out there. Appreciate that.
Did you guys happen to see the INRAC packet and all those comments that came out of our county parks? I mean, I'm not obviously a commissioner, but I work for you and I'm so proud. I mean, people are absolutely loving these, these county parks. I mean, we've gotten great feedback over the years, but I don't think it's been at this level. I mean, people literally like, this is a, I mean, how many times have they said, this is the best park I've ever been at? Over and over, I mean, this is really cool.
From cleanliness to, to, you know, user, yeah, I think the top rating was a five and, and most of the averages were 4.9 or 4.8. So it was, it was real positive feedback.
You guys have made some great decisions, I think, for the, for the folks here and the folks come here, you know? So kudos to you guys.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. That is all we have, Mr. Chair, unless you have questions for us.
Just glad to have you back.
Thank you.
All right.
Other than that?
We'll call her today.
Move on to the next.